This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
That's great. Call this meeting order, please stand up for the special allegiance. Well, the allegiance to apply the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the miserable, with liberty and justice for all. Here's your name standing for a moment of silence. He's taken seats. Uh, there was an executive session held by our citizens tonight to discuss personnel. Roll call, please. Iser, Savage, here, Procius, here, Barnhart, here, Martina. Is there any public comment at this time on agenda items? Any public comments on agenda items at this time? Alright, uh, you have two additions to the agenda. Uh, one is for City Hall. This being the City Hall phase two agreement, remind dollars. And the other one is for the blueprint funds. Uh, do I have a second to add them to the agenda? Savage. Yes. Barnhart, yes, Martina. Iser. Procius. Yes. Alright, uh, Mike?
Alright. So the first Baptist church, uh, over Chestnut and South Ford. Got a small plan here. They're looking to pay for the lot where the building burned down. They're only increasing it a very small amount over what was there in previous. Uh, we're from the fiscal authorities. They have no issue with a minor increase that might be realized or they're in the system. We have a letter stating the same. They feared to exempt all of the requirements for a new work form work. And, um, so we recommend that waiver. It's not a main event, it's just a grant plan. Um, so with you all approval that waiver, uh, Joe can go ahead.
Alright, any questions, anyone? Alright, so, boys, Chris or more?
I'm just motioning to grant the waiver.
Alright, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Alright, thank you, Mike. Uh, Jamie, C D P G project selection and awards.
Alright, thank you. So your C D P G grant for 2024 is three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, as we talked about at the most public hearing. Tonight, I would like you to take action to select your 2024 projects. Would be C D P G administration at fifty thousand and Susquehanna Avenue stormwater and sewer separation phase two at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Iser. Just gonna keep going down, Jamie?
Yep, so the next item is the City Hall improvements bidding and administration phase agreement. We've got a proposal from Maryup, Maryup, Marotamane. Right, Marotamane, Ted Strasser's new firm that he's with for the bidding phase and construction administration phase of the City Hall improvements project for nine thousand dollars. And I'm looking for your approval of that agreement this evening.
I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Procius. Yes.
And the final item is your 2023 professional services agreement for your C D P program with SEDAC for the fifty thousand dollars. This was based on the scope we presented last year at this time. We finally had your contract in place and we are ready to move forward so we can do our agreement to administer your 2023 funds.
I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Martina.
I will email you copies of all that to sign and then we'll go from there.
Awesome, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you guys.
Alright, uh, moving on, letter of interest hard. Mr. Barnhart.
I got a letter of interest, but we got a letter of interest for hard for coding column. I make the motion to accept that letter to the argument.
Second. Martina.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to new business. Uh, this was the addition, the community blueprint, uh, funds. Uh, this goes through S R I to show them our support for when they have their meetings and their gatherings to help for the support. So I made the motion to, from economic development from the treasurer, uh, three thousand dollars to S R I for their community blueprint funds for their different meetings at their home. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser. Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Uh, Mr. Becker.
So according to the office of the budget for, uh, the rack fees that we are, are the applicant for specifically for this one, uh, with, uh, fresh roasted coffee, we need to increase our, uh, unfolding theft limit, uh, from two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. I talked to Purdy, um, and they said that would, uh, increase our premium a hundred and sixteen dollars for the remainder of our policy term, which is two more years. So in order to release any funding, uh, to, um, fresh roasted coffee through the rack fee, they said we have to increase this, uh, specific, uh, insurance.
Will we be getting like reimbursed from them because our premiums are going up for us handling the funds and stuff like that?
That would be something that we would have to create. Well, uh, I have to check our cooperation agreement, um, but that's something we can ask for fresh roasted coffee to do.
Well, you will, which is you understand.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, long as you put that in the motion, I'm okay with it that way. Yeah. Any, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Was the money, this, was the project finished yet or no? Yes. So, uh...
I know, I, I know we're discovering, Andy spoke to me about it. I don't know if that was the completed project, but he did show me the progress of what the money was used for. So I can't speak of when it actually got finished, but I know it was.
I want to say a month or so, maybe a little bit more. And they want us to increase the, just stick with, they want us to increase the coverage on the property that's already finished. So, correct. I did preface with that. Um, the difference between this and other ones may be, uh, the way it was said to me was since we are pass through, it makes it a little bit different. It's not our money, so we wouldn't be stealing from ourselves. We were, they're worried about the subgrain scheme doing it, I guess. So it, it makes it, they said it makes it a little bit different.
Where a premium go back? I mean, once the money's all the way through and the project's done, where a premium, I mean, let's switch it back down. Where a premium go back down?
It, I mean, yeah, but I, I mean, I didn't ask Andy if we can just do it for, uh, I don't know.
I don't want to be set with a higher premium.
Couple days. I, I, I don't know. It needs to be there. I'll put it this way. It needs to be in, in place for the time that we need to have to get reimbursed from rack fee. I don't know how long that is. It could be six months, it could be a year. I really don't know. It just depends on how much they, how long it takes for them to give the money to us as a pass through to get to.
So why don't we just put in the motion that any additional costs will require reimbursement from fresh roast in order for us to do this for how long? A month, six months, a year? So if our premium goes up X number of dollars, we have to be reimbursed those amounts of dollars.
Yeah, any cost incurred by the city, but just because of project, that doesn't mean they closed it out yet. Like you said, until the money comes back through rack fee, it could take a year, two years.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I don't know. You know, they, it has to be in place to get the money. So technically, when the money comes through, if it came, put in today, say it came in tomorrow, we could, you know, go back down as far as our, our limit goes. But until we get that money, the limit has to be three, three hundred thousand.
Alright, so I'll just make, Mr. Everyone's aware and okay with. I'll just make the motion that we bump up the theft insurance to three hundred thousand and any costing incurred from this point on this project through the rack fee of fresh roast, that they reimburse us those, those increases. Savage.
No.
Go ahead, Lisa, before we continue.
I'm just trying to process it. So it's a hundred and sixteen dollars for the next two years.
Two years.
And you're just gonna ask Andy to reimburse us whatever we have to go with?
Correct.
Or we don't, we don't know how long it has to go back up or?
No, it's just like, for example, for the remainder of the year, I think Derek says a hundred and sixty some odd dollars.
It's your remainder of two years.
So whatever it is, so if it gets canceled or like we want the money upfront, then if it gets canceled, then we get reimbursed, I'm saying a hundred dollars. Alright, that money goes back to them. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Procius.
Yes. Councilman Barnhart, go ahead, sir.
Make the motion to promote Cheryl Dalseth. She's been a code officer to a logistics officer, which will be working with the police on some code issues. Uh, nineteen dollars an hour, uh, full time, starting immediately. That was she will start working with the police.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Before I continue, everybody knows the code officer, so it seems like a lot, but we still not gonna be up till. I'd like to hire Joe Stutzman, code officer, uh, part-time at a pay rate of twelve dollars an hour. Make that into a motion. I, I, I went over the, I went over the budget. Um, Jeff and I went over it for the rest of this year and for next year. And if everything we're doing here is.
Sustainable.
It is, yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Abstain. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Like I said, this is all in the budget for this year and next year, so that hurt nothing. I'd like to hire Robert Howe for a full-time code officer at a pay rate of sixteen dollars an hour. Uh, Stutzman and Robert Howe, Howe will be starting the Tuesday after Labor Day. Make that in the motion.
Second. Martina. Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the utility ordinance, uh, I have it right here. Correct. I had it so I didn't have to do this.
Somewhere in there, right?
It, uh, amend the, the uniform construction code by requiring code compliance and except exemptions for utility and miscellaneous use structures.
Second. Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Martina. Barnhart.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Barnhart, keep going.
I'd like to approve the second reading of ordinance one seventy-five dash one twelve zoning fee ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Savage.
Yep.
Procius. Yes. Oh, go ahead, Councilman Barnhart.
Yes.
Oh, I meant to keep going. Do I ask, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the, uh, revision of the, of the fee schedule.
And just so I would work for the revision of the fee schedule, that is because we've taken on N E I C to do the zoning and the planning and that is getting up the code with all of their fees that they enact upon everyone that they're involved with.
And this, and the fee schedule was sent to, uh, the revisions were sent to N E I C to have them look over it and make sure everything is good and they agree that the changes were, were good.
So I will second. Martina. Barnhart.
Yes.
Procius. Yes.
Shut off every five minutes, three minutes.
I'm telling you, fly.
It's taking pictures.
Alright, so network assessment, uh, we spoke about that last week when the one I T company came in and spoke to us, uh, Innotec. Um, in your folder is, uh, we'll call it an invoice slash their I T, what their I T assessment would cover and entail. Um, as we spoke about earlier in the year, that, you know, our I T is coming out of date here. By the end of the year, some of this stuff, I know that the police department will be out of date and not be able to be used. What this allows us to do, if we shall choose to go with Innotec to do this, which I recommend, that allows us, they will come in and assess all the departments, meet with their supervisors and say, hey, what software, what programs do you need to operate? And then they come in, okay, these are the programs that you need. Don't need, this is the computers that allow you to do this type of stuff. Because like for me, for example, I don't need a fancy computer. All I gotta do is be able to read email, open up documents. While someone like the police or D P W to open up scans and documents, they need a little bit more high tech. So that's what, the Innotec, this was what this network assessment will do for us. And debating, no matter who we go with for our I T in the future, we'll still have on record the I T that we will need to move forward. I did, I did talk to treasurer true. There are funds for this out of the fiber optic that he has. So the funds are there. It is the cost of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is there any question, anyone? One thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Questions, anyone? Alright, so I make the motion to have the network assessment completed through Innotec. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Councilman Iser.
Yes, I have a code here from I B C for the seven, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars fifteen cents for the journals, the sweep program, uh, Curden asked us to vote on this subject and buy them a purchase.
Second.
Thank you.
Well. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Iser. Keep going, Councilman Iser.
The list, we need in October, couple of dates, uh, twenty...
No, twenty-first. Twenty-eighth.
Yes, that is going to be the date we're gonna have the auction. It'll be announced on the time of Joel Trump, how much time he needs prior to the council meeting. And in between there, we'll take and of course advertise the properties and also put a sign on each property that's going to be sold there. It's gonna be sold on the date. Before council, we might have the meeting.
The auction.
Here. You just have the auction here.
Yeah. Jim, we have a, have a hustle.
Joel will take care of that.
Alright, so, so you're saying you need a vote or you just?
I will make a motion, that's the date.
Okay, October, October twenty-eighth is the time to be announced. So I'll second his motion. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Iser. Councilman Savage, finish this off here.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the release of the line of credit number four, one, 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 five, nine, one, four, seven. This was an active line of credit that the city used. Uh, we no longer have a need for it and we have a letter from Northern National Bank, um, allowing us to be released. So I make the motion for all that we accept their record.
Procius. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Can I technically do that since I used to work there?
You don't work there anymore.
No, I don't, but I didn't know if it would cause a conflict or not. Joel might have to be asked that.
But you just want to be safe and abstain, you can do that also, so you're safe.
Eric, what is the price? Quite safe.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Savage.
I also make a motion for the approval of the abstract vouchers for the general fund in the amount of one hundred, four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Liquid fuels in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, ninety-seven cents. Private grants in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, eighteen cents. And payroll, uh, number eighteen is reported on eighth party, two thousand, twenty-four included in your packets.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Alright, discussion items. Vote much late, Jim, is there an update on them? I know we have until the end of the year, but people have been asking, hey, where we're at.
We're getting closer.
Okay, how much is closer? I mean, has Saxton gone down there and they pulled the bulbs yet? Now pulled, we got up there to bust a truck or anything?
I, this one Saxton was out of town last week. And we called last weekend. This is the weekend we're working on.
Alright, so.
Mr. Walker, uh, private level, once it's Thursday morning, I'll be down. Just want to actually loop you down there. I'll just go do that tomorrow. I'll, that's, sure.
Alright, now we're, just give those voters some update, how did it appreciate that? Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on here, sandwich boards. I know we brought this up about a month or so ago about having sandwich boards in the park. Um, a couple of businesses been asking where we're at on it because they said, I mean, we said that they weren't allowed and then they later saw some other signs in the park that were allowed and they saw some signs on Front Street that were allowed. And then they were just confused on what we're allowing, what we're not allowing. Like, we're just, there was up in air about, I know the question about PennDOT, but, I mean, I called PennDOT, they said they're okay with it. Loans is not impeding on any right of way or visionary or things like that. So I just, I just want to have a discussion on where we're at on that because the businesses said they would appreciate that. I know a lot of people also said, you know, when you're driving through different towns, you see sandwich boards, they know that there's businesses in town and things like that. Like, I drove through Seals Road on Saturday and they had sandwich boards right up to the curb and, you know, not even off, I mean, they're off the street, but not like, you know, five feet, they're right on the curb. So I was just wondering what, what we are allowing, what we're not allowing, stuff like that. Just had a conversation here because people, everyone's, everyone's confused on what we're allowing because they see it and we said we're not allowing it, so they're kind of confused.
Well, you know my feelings about it. We spent all that money in Cameron Park to beautify it. And well, and if everybody in the city would put something in Cameron Park, it would look like trash.
So the weeds that are four foot high don't look like trash right now?
Well, I could mention that, Mr. Bear.
Yes, sir.
Carl, I guess you and Carl had a conversation about the weeds?
We probably have. I just asked when they're gonna get to them.
Carl was calculating out all the time we spent on all these events. He said that would be about four weeks of work. He said we probably could have got to them. And we're working that situation in the next budget.
Okay, are they gonna get, are the weeds gonna get dressed before the next budget? This out of curiosity?
Well, they're working every day, they're rebuilding the skating rink for the ice season.
Oh, I know, I'm, I get that.
So there's only three guys working there.
I know. So is there any chance that Carl's, or not just Carl, but the whole department will get some help? So, you know, we can keep the beautification, as you said in the morning.
Well, and we're working off of the budget.
I understand.
And Steve East tied it up, but he's mind-bending today, so we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
So they want to do the sandwich boards in the park instead of along the, oh?
Well, it's just a better visibility thing for those businesses around the park, you know? Not, not all the businesses are around the park and other businesses are understanding of that, but they, they're kind of confused at the same time, they're like, you know, we don't allow it. Steve?
I talked with Danny, uh, she is the director of this right-of-way type stuff, uh, the signs, the PennDOT, District Three. And she said zero, there are chances, it is not permitted by, by District.
Okay, so how far off the road does it mean by signs? So does that mean?
They have a fifty-foot right-of-way on Market Street, open in the park.
Okay, so does that mean, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, I know this is in like a soft spot here. So when it comes to the decorations, so they not allow fifty feet off the road either? So when Christmas comes around, they put like the painted signs up in the park and the Christmas trees and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, but that's, that's all ten feet in the park with these.
You said fifty feet.
No, I said fifty-foot right-of-way. So, so fifty-foot means off the face of the business. Across the sidewalk coming over about fifty feet is where the, like, the riders is.
Yeah.
It's just a simple thing, Josh. It's not them, against any business owners or against any random hills. It's just that PennDOT position, that's why they had us remove the welcome and summary sign.
I understand that.
To keep up. Um, there's court rulings on it. Um, it's a federal thing that they pushed down into the states. The states are pushing on to us. Federal rulings on that the only place that you're, the only signs that are actually permitted are either political or directional, short-term signs, saying yard sale this way, and you gotta take it down within a day or six.
Okay? So even if they're taking it down within five, six hours, it's still not allowed?
Yeah, but you're talking about something you're putting up there every day, Josh. It's just something that they, I asked her, she's the expert.
So can you put it on the curb then?
No.
So then how come other communities can do these things, but it seems like we can't? I'm just asking.
There's a lot of people out there that violate the law.
So we need to, so I'm just, I'm just, so everyone's aware, so if these signs are up, we're gonna go around and tell them, you have to take them down.
Josh, do you know how many signs I took down the last?
No, see, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I got letter, con, letter, con, letter from PennDOT to take down signs for, for the Elks, for, for Legion. I mean, all kinds of signs we've been able to take down over the last five years, including our welcome and summary.
No, I, see, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah, all, this is just what they take home.
Okay, no, I'm, like I said, I'm not disagreeing. It's just the businesses have questions because they see them and they're, they're like, we say one thing.
Yeah, it's like anything. Yeah, it's like anything. Like people violate the law when they, when PennDOT comes out and they hammer them because they'll be getting letters, just like I got letters, that, hey, you gotta go meet up with the Juana's Club or this or that, you gotta go take the sign down. You gotta take them off. I've gotten dozens of these letters over the course of five years. They randomly send people out to look for these things. And when they look for them and they find them, they say, take them down. They, they do not want them. It all stems, I believe, back a long time ago. They got sued for a sign some voters kept.
Something, yeah, somebody did.
And they just, they just said, that's it. The best game, what they said, no sign allowed in right of way unless they have traffic signs.
And they have jurisdiction, so my, so my question, Judge, maybe this is a question here, so like, is Seals Road just main road or a state road? I mean, that's, and it's.
I mean, that's, and it's, well, I mean, like Lewisburg also, you see, you see signs right over Lewisburg, you know, it's like, that's the holdup, I'm like, I'm not disagreeing with them or something. I'm just saying, not to hold up with our businesses in town here, that they see other communities doing it, but it seems like some are, can't do it.
Or are you, are you talking about putting it in front of their businesses on the curb, on their sidewalk, or are you talking about putting it in a park?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about either or, depending where they're located at, because, you know, like, when it comes to, like I said, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but I might get some Christmas decorations, so no one say that.
Well, PennDOTs always stay away from us as far as the parking spots, even though they're there, they, you know, it's hard to control inside.
Yeah.
So I think you might be able to get away with, hey, if they put it out, like, here's our specials with a little sandwich board that says, you know, hey, it's hoagies for twenty-nine, thirty-nine cents, I think, give us hoagies for twenty-nine cents a payment. But, whatever the deal is for that day, and then bring them in when they close at five, seven o'clock, whatever. I don't think, you know, if one doesn't be traffic, we maintain a five foot width for wheelchairs and everything else, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But it's in the park, I think, is where you run, run, run speed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking, so when they ask about the Christmas decorations, what's, what's the reason?
Christmas decorations are further removed.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember, we don't put anything out.
Oh, no, I know.
Even the trees, everything's ten to twelve inch in from the curb, and you're proposing to put these sandwich boards in there, it wouldn't make any sense to put them anywhere but at the curb for them.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, I just, honestly, I, I think it's a good idea, um, to try to help generate some business, the other thing we could also do is, you know, hey, if we don't have a real hard winter, if they're gonna get their guys out, we get current trees again off the business spaces. I mean, we really hammered them two years ago, I think we, we knocked the hell out of them, and if I get an opportunity, if we get the time, we'll get out there and knock them back again.
Well, that works, like I said, now, now at least they know an answer, like the problem, but they were just confused because, you know, just having that happen, what outcome was going on here?
And that's why I went directly to, like I said, she's the one, she's in charge for PennDOT and the whole District Three, and like I said, that's why I went there, she made others.
That works, all right, thank you. Uh, moving on here to the rate notification system, uh, I know at least the council has kinda got like the phone call and the text message. I know Jeff helped me out here, just isn't good stuff, there's gonna be chances for people to sign up once we get, I don't know if it's gonna be a QR code or a link, I forget which one it is.
We're, we're, the rave system's up, we have all records from the water company, all public, uh, all public records, we have that already set into the rave system. We're going to be putting in open newspaper, online Facebook, a way that you guys can get on and tell us the preferences that you want. The system we have, we can tell you, I said this today, we can tell you from yard sale on the hill to flood, I mean, I hope I never say that. But something bad to, you know, end of days, we can tell you everything and you'll get it, you'll get it by phone call, by text, by Facebook, however you choose. I'm not a Facebook guy, really, so I can't do that, but we'll notify you guys, like, if you get a second, if you get an emergency, notify you. My phone, bring all your phones, not guns, like, bring all your house phones, just from, bring your cell phones, however you guys wanna be notified, we're gonna notify them.
Yeah, so that's a little update on the rave system there, so this is a little update on that. Any questions on the rave system, anyone? All right, uh, moving on to, uh, rental permit requirements, I talked with Councilman Bar a little bit, I talked with the chief, I talked with other, uh, law enforcement officers here, I know it was a little hot topic last time about the background checks and having them be submitted. So I talked with different individuals and they said a simple suggestion, since we're assuming that most people do the background checks, just having like a couple boxes when they fill out the rental permit, saying that they're acknowledging different things. Such as, for example, one thing that is required by law, if, um, someone is on Megansol, that they're registering at this address. So if you did a background check, you're, you know, kinda checking this box saying, individual A has registered, individual B is not a, what offender. Tells us one way, people that they are doing their background checks, that will show up correct, chief? All right, and just another one is, you know, another check mark, you know, if they are doing their background checks, is if they're, um, on outstanding warrant from the law in Pennsylvania. You're, you're checking that box saying, A, this individual is not, or this individual is, because.
What about the individuals that aren't doing background checks, so if they just don't get the box, thank, and we don't say?
No, there's gonna be a box here that says, maybe, I mean, we're still working out everything.
Yeah, we're gonna, I mean, just like some of the options.
I did a background check, or no, I didn't.
Okay, so you're giving the option.
Right.
Yeah, so at least at that point, we have an idea, hopefully, who's telling the truth and who's not telling the truth, and at that point, when incidents do arise, we can see who, like, for example, if they checked the box saying, I'm just using example, this person is not out, on an outstanding warrant, and we go to the address and they are. Well, then you falsify the document, that's a whole different line of work, am I right, chief? Like, you're, I don't know the exact terminology in law enforcement terms, but. Yeah, what he said there, so, like I said, it's not like it's solved in life, but these are just a couple solutions, rather than having to submit it, but saying, all right, if you actually did do it, these things would've came up, that would've.
This is progress and it works.
Yeah, so these are a couple suggestions, I don't know if anyone else has any different suggestions, but these, their idea is not requiring them to submit it, but they're also, they're also saying, if they did it or they did not do it. And they have those boxes which they can check, and it goes back to the chief, that going back to falsifying a document, whether you did or did not, so. Any questions, anyone, or comments?
I can interject, the logistics officer, that's gonna be part of their duty, working with the police, after everything here gets straightened out.
All right, any other questions on that, anyone, statements, comments, concerns? If there's no comments, John, that means it must be a good idea.
Well, we'll see the forms before they're approved, right?
Well, yeah, of course, but I'm just saying, if no, if, I didn't hear any opposing to those two boxes or three boxes, so.
But as long as, I'm assuming it's not in, set in stone right now, Joel's gonna make sure certain things that are asked are able to be asked.
Yeah, correct, it's just like, we have to start someplace, obviously, the background check wasn't the place to start, so if, if no one's opposed to this, which no one said there was, same. That way we can, like, we need to get the ball rolling, some groundwork to say, all right, what's legal, what's not legal, what can be done, what cannot be done. If everyone's okay with it, all right, then we put it into the ordinance that is in there about rental permit requirements and so on and so forth. Questions, anyone, comments, concerns? No comments, concerns, anyone? Hey, everybody, John, you heard it, there were no comments or concerns.
There's no concerns you have to have yet.
None at this time.
On the paper.
None at this time.
Exactly.
May I, I have to?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, so before we go on to announcements, I actually need to amend my motion for the approval of the abstracts and vouchers.
Okay.
Uh, to also include, include payroll number seventeen as presented on August sixteen, there was two payrolls and I only mentioned the number eighteen, so seventeen and eighteen.
All right, so was that a motion?
A motion, payroll, payroll seventeen.
Second.
Warren, Mark?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Groshus?
Yes.
Just go back to the top of the top, yes. For here.
Yes, sir. Uh, wait a minute, how they work?
Okay. Back to the, uh, checking the boxes and so forth, I think on the application for the landlords that they're filling out, that the city sends out, I think you should have listed places they, they can look up. The background checks, give them all the information possible.
I'll just update anyone right now, I do mine for school last night, there was a free one, I was, we need to pay the new one, it was twenty-two dollars.
Let's go back to the free ones for the.
All right, we're gonna give them the tools to do it, to do all the, to do the checks that they choose to do it. So, I mean, we're gonna, I already talked to Joel, we're working out all, all the bugs and making everything legal, to say we don't wanna infringe on anybody's.
Rights or constitutional.
And so it's like, everything's gonna be legal.
Yeah. Yeah, and if anyone cares about the FBI fingerprinters, had that done too, that was only thirty-two dollars, so.
That's why the school teachers are, but go ahead, John.
I know, hell, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think they're as bad as the landlords are yet, but.
You're the landlord.
I'm gonna break through the background, but that's at least not. All right, all right, any, any other things for discussion? Alrighty then, there's no need for the first announcement of the harp, because that was filled, we are accepting letters of interest for the seven open spots in nuisance abatement. Of the field board?
I'm trying to interrupt that.
Yep.
If I can get the paper to put something in about accepting those letters, 'cause if we started sending out the abatement, if they appeal, we don't have any good results.
All right, so we do need board members, people in the audience, volunteers. Uh, Arts and Curiosity Fest will be at Stro Alley on September fourteenth, Tire and Metal Recycling Event at the James R. Ister Youth and Community Center on September fourteenth from nine to twelve. No TVs or dishwashers, tire proceeds, we go to the skate parks, when all donations, we go to the sixth, the sixth, excuse me, the sixth grade student at Shiklelemi. The late Augusta Wanda Brews will be at Rural Phillips Park on September twentieth, next council meeting will be September ninth. You're in the council chambers, and at this time, is there any public comments? Please say your name, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Sterling McGlynn. Um, I question, I obviously missed my, to the last meeting, so please excuse me as I bring myself up to date on the rental issues. We'll just check in the boxes and, who's disclosing information?
So, so every time the landlord has to renew or get a new rental permit, they have to turn.
Yeah, my landlord said.
Yeah, so you'd be the individual with either checking the boxes saying that this individual's on Megansol or is not, this person is on, I mean, is out, has outstanding warrants, or you're checking, I did not do any background.
Okay, so I.
That would be a landlord, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that would be required to be submitted to the city at the time of the rental.
Yeah, so it's no difference when you turn all the paperwork in, those, they'll say, for example, those boxes, maybe at the bottom, you just have to check which ones apply for you.
Okay, so, I have an issue with that as well, so you're asking landlords to, just so I clarify, you're asking landlords to perform a background check, if in fact they do, or they're checking the box, they didn't do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Those that do the background checks, um, criminal background checks. When you're asking a landlord now to further disseminate information that they have in their hands to another agency, other than whom that tenant gave permission to give.
We're not, we're not, like, what we discussed right now, we're not asking for the background check, we're just asking, saying, this person is, like, by law, they have to register on Megansol, if they are.
Right.
Like, you're, you're acknowledging that they did, or if they are, they, they have enlisted that, you know, said address that they are there.
And I'm not going to know that information unless I do a criminal background check on somebody, so I now have a report, I mean, I don't know how to check Megansol.
No, no, like, if you do the PA background check, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it will show up on the PA background check, correct? So if you're doing one.
Background check, correct?
I'm, I'm just saying, I thought the PA background check is the same as criminal. Yeah, okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Some may only do a financial, is that what you're saying? 'Cause I know some landlords only do like a financial background check.
Correct, but for the criminal portion of it, again, a landlord would sign an authorization allowing you to run a criminal background. That authorization is going for the landlord itself, and now you're asking the landlord to disclose information off of what the landlord obtained through that. Wouldn't we not also need to get permission from the tenant to further disclose that information to the city of some area, as another requester of that information, should that be allowed?
Well, like I said, ma'am, like I said, we're discussing this stuff right now, like, our solicitor's gonna review all these things.
Okay.
But going back to, uh, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, they say if you're doing the background checks, the one of the Megansol that is required by law, you have, whoever, individual has to register that address. And once again, if an individual is out on, excuse me, outstanding warrants, for example, like, you know, as a, we'll say a law-abiding citizen. Like, you have, I won't say, I'll say, I won't say a legal obligation, but a moral obligation, I think, you wanna report those things, and that's all we're saying. Like, we're not asking the attorney background over this thing that, hey, you did or you did not, and, like I said, this is nothing finalized, it's just, we're trying to figure out what the best solution is moving forward, and that's why, like I said, nothing.
We're not telling you to disclose anything to us.
Yeah, but you're asking me to check the box to say whether or not they're Megansol.
Yeah, but that's just so, okay, we know she checked or she didn't check.
Yeah, and like I said, we're just, this is the conversation right now, and it's one of those things that if a solicitor says it's not legal, it's okay, then we can't do it. But like, it's one of these things, we're just trying to figure out what's the best way to get to the end.
And that's a question we can pose to him and avoid on that.
Right, and I was hoping Joel would be here today, because, yeah, there are certain things, and please pass on to the attorney, please. Obviously, we've got Title Five under the United States Code, um, Section five fifty-two that has to be addressed, we have the Consumer Reports Protections. Uh, biggest thing is Department Housing, Urban Development Guidelines that are imposed upon landlords for discrimination, and, but help us all, our landlords have been in progress, so the Human Relations Commission on issues. And we've got the Fair Credit Reporting Act, this all falls under, so we've got a lot of issues divided into that, again, it's not so much that you're doing reports, um, that you guys are trying to find out the information. I'm concerned of, I do the background check, I am now checking a box, I am disclosing to a third party, other than whom that tenant has authorized that information to be released to. So it's that second step that is the major concern, not that like we're doing.
We're not asking you to disclose anything to us, you do a background check, you don't gotta hand a background check in us, we're just gonna give you one, that's all.
And maybe, and maybe, and maybe just go back to just, maybe we don't have those boxes, maybe just, the box that says, you did it, and that's it.
You did it, or you did not.
And maybe that, and maybe that's the way to go, like I said, we're just.
Maybe there's no, maybe there's any boxes there, I don't know, till we'll, disclose it.
And that would be a safe way to do it, it's just, step number two is where the issue may arise, so we ask the council to please consider that, and get that in your abatement with the attorney, please. Because there are a lot of legal issues in that aspect that really concern us.
And we're not telling you who you can and can't rap to.
Oh, obviously, you can't do that, that's discrimination.
No, but people have said that's what we're trying to do and that's far from true.
We're not trying to do that.
Nope, and I don't see the council doing that at all, I just, I, I am worried about the information that I as a landlord obtained, and then to check the box thing, I'm now disclosing now to somebody else, okay, I did this, oh, hey, there is an outstanding warrant. I'm disclosing information from something where a tenant only gave me the authorization, and now I'm disseminating to somebody else. There's where the issue is, the second dissemination of information. So, and then obviously, you know, you get a criminal background check, and maybe there is a Megansol listed there, maybe it is there in error, people have had junk on their reports all over the place, they have the right to clear that as well. So again, you may be reporting false information, and until somebody has an opportunity to clear, they've got two names that are exactly identical, it's messed up in today's society, so, hi, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? I'm gonna start, sir, is that handy, go ahead, sir?
Yes, my name's Gary Vingman. I've talked to the city solicitor this morning about an incident that happened this past Friday in City of Sundar. Um, down on, between Line and Ray Street on Fifth. A young man had passed away from a heroin overdose, and they had funeral for him, and after the funeral, they proceeded to have what they called a memorial for him at the garage. At Triangle Millers, Todd and Tamia Ross's business. Their memorial wasn't like a candlelight or anything like that, it was a display of reckless endangerment to people and property. For four and a half hours, there was tire burning, tire smoking, racing up and down the streets, revving inventions in high decimals. I called the city police several times and got no resolution at all. I looked it up, I mean, reckless endangerment is a major violation that requires a fine and lots of license. Yet, these people were left off to go for, four and a half hours with no disbursement or fines or, you know, there was nothing done. As a truck driver for Walmart, I go to bed early, I, I had to call off the next day at work because I could not sleep peacefully in my own house half a block away. Um, I, I don't understand how there wasn't any police involvement in the incident.
Chief, did you address the situation?
Mr. Vingman? Yes.
Number one, my first question is to you, how do you know it was a heroin overdose?
What's that?
How do you know it was a heroin overdose?
Those are, the word gets around.
Okay, but how do you know it was a heroin overdose? So you just, you put, you put the family.
Okay, okay, let's just put this way.
Hang on, the question is to you, you just put the family on the spot, on camera, that it was a heroin overdose, I don't even know that it was a heroin overdose.
That's what I, that's what I heard from a secondhand source.
Assume, what's assumed?
But my, 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 my thing is.
The second one is, is I'm gonna address your second question, how do you know nothing was done?
Well, my wife called the police and she was outside when a cop came down.
Okay, how do you know arrest was a name?
Because I had to go down later and then, okay, I called at three o'clock, when it was started. And I told the police that they needed to put someone over there to monitor the situation, because I, it, it started, and I knew it wasn't gonna let up. There was a gathering of at least forty or fifty, maybe even more people there, on, they blocked up the whole street, they obstructed a two-block period of Sundar's streets. I can, I have a video on my phone of burnt rubber on the streets.
If anything had been done by the police, how do you know nothing was done by the police?
Because my wife said a police officer showed up and told, warned them to leave, in response, a young man responded, well, you might as well, how much is the fine? You might as well write me the fine now, because it doesn't matter.
But did it stop from that point forward?
No, it did not, I had to down at seven thirty myself, I wa, after four hours of not being able to fall asleep because of all the, the disturbance. I went down the street myself to confront these people, which, again, it shouldn't have to come down to a civilian or a resident intervening in a situation like that in a crowd. Because, in my opinion, nothing was done properly to disperse the gathering, to stop the, you know, broadcase. And, and, and stop the reckless endangerment of, of people and property on a public street.
Well, I can, I can say, I can tell you that there was something done. There would be, it was handled, and the incident will be handled with an arrest. But what I'm gonna say to you is, I wouldn't speculate, and no one would want me to expect, speculate on a family that there was a death, but you assume that it was heroin. And now that's out for all social media, it's been out now.
My mistake.
But I'm addressing, I'm just letting you know, yes, the incident was addressed, number one, and there will be an arrest made.
Well, that's good to know, but in, in time, in hindsight, now I lost a day's wages, actually, two, because where I work, they're giving out bonuses to go in on your day off, of two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Plus the route paid, so I, I, I could've worked today and made up to about seven or eight hundred dollars to do a run, that I wasn't able to do, because I missed, had to miss a day because I didn't get enough sleep to work on one, one of my scheduled days.
I apologize for that, Mr. Vingman, what, the two questions you asked, I mean, I think I answered, um, if you're not getting your sleep, I mean, we can only do so much, we're making an arrest out of it. And it's, it's unfortunate you missed the sleep.
Two days' work.
It's unfortunate that there was a death.
Yes, and I said that to the people, I said, no, no parents should have to bury their child, and I, I, you know, I said, I told them, I felt bad for them.
Have I answered your question? No.
Well, my, my problem was, is, okay, there's gonna be a, an arrest made in hindsight, but if it would've been handled correctly at the moment, I possibly could've got sleep and went to work that day. Instead of missing out on like possibly fourteen hundred dollars of gross income.
Now, see, sometimes you have to handle different incidents with maybe white gloves, and they're taking consideration, we don't just, the ball just, just come in and lay the heavy hand down. But we take, we take in, you know, we take into the fact that there was a death, and we don't know what kind of death, but there was a death.
But there could've been another, if there would've been a mishap with reckless endangerment.
We weigh the factors, and some, some incidents we handle with white gloves, just like the incident we handled over here, we're handling with white gloves. There's certain things that, you live in the city, unfortunately, you know, that was an unfortunate event for you, and I hate that you lost sleep over that. But I, the only way that I can answer that with it, if you want something done, we're gonna do something.
So, we're not gonna solve what happened in the past, we can only do better moving forward, Mr. Vingman, do you have any other questions regarding the situation, or the chief will happily answer them? Is there any other question that he could answer for you at this moment?
Um, well, I do have another issue with snow plowing during the winter.
Okay.
Why is it that when we do snow plowing on the city streets, we plow everybody's cars in?
Would you like me to put this down?
Well, on a one-way street, when there's parking on one side, why don't we plow to the opposite side of the street? What, what if there's a, a, a health issue, emergency, someone's having a?
I, I just don't understand, sir.
I, I just don't understand, sir.
Or the car's piled in and somebody needs to get out and get someone to a monster, well, that would have a bigger car out.
I plow it to, I plow it to the, to the cars. I, I don't have a choice. I don't have the manpower to go out and physically remove the snow from the streets. It's just how every town plows, it's everywhere in the Northeast.
I mean, like, I live on Vine Street. There's parking on one side, there's a, a business on another, it's not residential. There's no, you know, there's no reason they can't plow to that side of the street.
So, I plow it up onto the sidewalk, then what do I do with it? Now that people can't traverse the sidewalk, then I gotta shovel the sidewalk. Where do I go with the snow? I have to plow it to the cars. That's how every snow plowing, you go to, end up plowing courses one-on-one. Plow to the cars, you don't plow to the sidewalk. That's just how you pause snow. I apologize, it's inconvenient. I don't have a solution except for my sack.
I, I don't see, I, I don't see, 'cause, you know, when I go out to shovel my car out to go to work, where do you think I'm putting the snow back?
Not in my street.
Or if you want me to play it.
Good question.
Put it by your car.
Put it behind your car, put it back your car. It's, it's Pennsylvania, it snows. You have to have someplace to go with the snow, I don't know what to tell you. I don't have a magic snowball machine.
Maybe we should have a system, I, I know years ago, there used to be a, a snow plow that where they would plow the snow right into dump trucks.
They, they do have that, but once again, that was back in the day when they had fifteen, twenty guys on in, on DPW in the different departments, we just don't have that manpower.
Well, I understand that, but in recent years, we haven't had that much snow either, that we need to plow cars in.
Luckily, the snow is only a little bit next to the car, not a whole lot. But sir, does that answer your other question about the snow plowing? Do you have any other questions, sir?
No, that'll be it.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Scott Chager. Most of you here know me, those who don't, Scott Chager. It's my brother Rodney, I have something here for you. This is a copy of a police report and a letter from the attorney to just decline their case due to the lack of police work. October third of twenty-twenty-three, my brother Rodney's ran over on the crosswalks on Market Street. It was a newer Mercedes gray. Sergeant Bremergen at the time, Brad Slack, Travis's brother, Riley, Terry Hesseger, and Gary Pressinger. Brad Slack was the officer who was first on the scene. Let me ask you a question, many of you ever stopped by a police officer for any reason whatsoever? That's right, sir. Ever pull those, first thing they ask you for?
Station Lawrence Park.
Anybody else? Driver's license, right, identification. Travis, I'm asking you, you were there, you talked to the man, so did Brad, so did, your brother.
I, I talked to your, I talked to your brother.
Sticks, sticks right on here.
Right, and then I left.
And so here, this is also dispatch, page two. I'm a little shaky, I had a little carried with me, just bringing this conversation. Okay.
Sergeant Bremergen and I arrived, we all involved, the person, EMS was arrested in the area, and spoke with the sheriff. He advised he did not want to be seen by EMS and was directed by officers that he should at least let them check him out. I asked if he wanted me to contact any of his family members. He advised that he called his old lady, Officer Ranger, and bought Brendan's sir. Advised he had the information and would complete the accident report.
Paragraph two, Sergeant Bremergen and I arrived and spoke with the officers and the involved parties.
And the involved persons.
Persons, yes, both persons. Going along...
I don't fully agree, brother.
Bottom line is, why didn't anybody get the name of the guy, the address, you get a license plate? I'm, I'm assuming he was drunk behind the doors. That's the only assumption I have, I don't have a choice, but if you did.
I, I don't, I don't, I, I couldn't tell you who the other person was that went there. You were there.
Talked to him.
No, to talk to him.
Yeah, but you were on the scene, you, you're the sergeant at the time. So, and, and, you know, we contacted you, Monley had contacted you.
So, Brendan's, Brendan's sir, Gary Brendan's sir, who was the investigating officer, made multiple attempts. And he also ran a Pennsylvania Criminal Intelligence Center through Pasing, requesting information informed submitted by this officer to be updated.
After, this is, this is February this was released, February two thousand, two thousand and twenty-four. We got this report. This is October two thousand and twenty-three, October third.
When did he get the officer to do the report?
Right here. Uh, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Then, and through the, um, right there.
Look, we got an issue to us.
Yeah, that was issued to you.
Yeah, this is all we got. Why wasn't that information taken at the scene? Don't you take, I mean, Travis, you pulled a thousand people over. First thing he asked for is license registration.
Right.
Proof of insurance. Why was this obtained at this scene?
Did, did he obtain, I had to talk to him, I don't...
Well, we know he did, I talked to him, I, I talked to him.
Right, I'd have to talk to him and ask him basically what, why he didn't obtain that information.
Okay, so the very first page from Monley. Read why they dropped this. Unfortunately, the Sundar Police Department has been unable to identify the person who caused the accident and their insurance carrier. Without this information, they may not move forward with any claims on behalf accordingly, must apply for case. They had it for a year, waiting for the information on this guy. Now, somebody on the crosswalks that killed him, you got this information. He's sixty years old, he has his knee busted up, he's gotta have surgery, he's gotta pay for his medical.
Right, yeah, I, I absolutely would have had that.
You guys weren't involved in this, all you had to do is get the information, turn it over to us, we would have went through the insurance companies.
Right.
That was just trying to get businesses for video.
What's that?
Talking to businesses for video. Just thinking, anybody, I'd like to vlog people a video.
It's a sweet one, it was, it was thirteen people there, thirteen witnesses. My sister came up, my brother came up, I drove past him, I appointed him, make sure he's okay.
Yeah, so Brendan's sir and Riley basically arrived from District Court. Myself and Sergeant Slack arrived to basically make sure that those guys needed any help. We spoke to your bro, I, I spoke to your brother.
I know you did.
Yeah, and made sure basically he was okay. But he didn't want, he didn't want EMS at the time.
But he, he was a child, he got hit, he threw him, he threw him over the sidewalk, his knee was busted. And he got up there, he got up, he searched around.
I mean, the only thing I can do, Scott, I can talk to Rodney, so, but, and see, I mean, I mean, it looks like he did some due diligence and went through the Pennsylvania Basic Center.
But due diligence, so he went on the scene, he got the information, it shouldn't have taken right there.
Look, I can't tell you what was going on at that time, I don't, for, for us to be there, something must have been going on at that time.
Can you see where I'm standing with this? Honestly, can you see where this guy is, new Mercedes Benz?
No.
Four officers there, and he's getting ready to go away and interview them, so nobody got the information.
I, I don't know.
We have no idea what we got, and there's no way we're gonna be able to find out. I don't care what they do now, there's no video evidence. So, if I claim this guy was highly drunk in the police, City of Sundar Police let him go. I have no choice but to bring a suit.
Yeah, and I'm gonna tell you, Scott, like, at the time, I wasn't, I wasn't chief.
Hope you're sorry.
We go, and I'm not blaming anybody, but we go through monthly and we check reports. And that month, I mean, that was back in October, October thirty-twenty. Right, so, I mean, I, I have to talk to Gary, I have to talk to Gary. And I can definitely go back to him and speak basically what, what, what all he did do and what he asked.
We already retained you, counsel. Monley dropped this on the board on the twenty-third. You guys, we have no information to move forward with. Just so you're aware, I know Joel's not here tonight, but you live in office, but, just so you understand, we're going...
Okay.
Do you have anything to say to me about how, how these officers reacted, I mean...
I mean, I don't, I gotta say, sir, I mean, I wasn't there in the situation, I can't speak for someone else's reaction, I, I don't know, I wasn't there. Only thing, I said, she can just look into it and get back to you, that's all I can say at this time, 'cause I don't have the information of the incident that you're speaking of, so I can't give an aggressive...
The record you handed to him, I'll have to read it, make sure you understand.
No, I, I mean, I can look at it now, this is like... Yes, sir, yeah.
My point being is, if it's negligence on behalf of the force, who's gonna back on it?
Who will come back? The chief can come back on the city.
Right. And I know, I know Travis personally, I know he would never do this. You know, the medicine, we never do it again. But it was dropped, it was dropped, there's problems. He's busted up, he had, he still had surgery. We have no choice but to move forward with the suit, so, I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
I thought that was a handle.